All right, thank you. Welcome to this meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education. This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office, and at each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Mrs. DeLuna?
Mr. Luer?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Napoloni?
Here.
Mr. Capella?
Here. As we have need for an executive session, Mr. Luer, would you care to move us in for all three tonight?
Certainly. I would like to move to convene an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss negotiations, legal and personnel issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cass. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Napoloni, one abstention. And with that, we are in executive session at 7:01 PM. Okay, thank you and welcome. We are back in regular session at 7:31 PM. And at this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the God of liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's go. I don't believe we have any special presentations this evening.
No.
So if it's okay with you, we'll move right to superintendent's comments.
Sure. Okay, so our town hall lease is advertised and will be set for approval on, at the October 24th meeting. I don't know if you noticed, but the volunteers, volunteers procedures changed from the state, so I revised the letter because the costs are different. It was in your packet on Friday. We have a back-to-school night on October 6th, and we will have a Chrome distribut, Chromebook distribution meeting prior. On October 13th at Riverview, we have Jed Baker, which is sponsored by CPAC and the Denville Special Services.
What date was that, CEO, I'm sorry?
That's October 13th at Riverview. The times are in, the times are on the calendar.
Yeah, they're posted on the calendar. Thanks.
And Matt Belacci is going to come to Denville, to the middle school, for sixth graders on September 28th. That's sponsored by the Denville Municipal Alliance. And I know he's also going to Knowles, too. They have it coming in, too. Knowles or Hills. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Kellis, you're up.
There's no Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much.
Just kidding.
Damaris, any business administrator comments tonight?
Just a reminder that tomorrow's the deadline. If anybody wants to sign up for the conference in October, please email me by tomorrow afternoon, and we can make the reservations.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to open up for public comment. It is 7:33 PM. Anything germane to the district? Just approach the podium, and sign in, and announce your name and address for the record. Seeing no one at all, I will close at 7:33 PM, the public comment section, and we will move to old business. Mr. Luer, would you care to take us to the old business items?
Certainly. I would like to move Resolutions A, B, and C. The first one is to approve the report of the treasurer and the board secretary. The second one is the education reports, which is student enrollment, medical office, and the HIB grading report from the last, from the previous school year. And the final one is the minutes, approving the minutes for the August 15th, regular and executive sessions.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luer? Mr. Lindsey? Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
No. And yes, on B?
Mr. Capella?
Yes. Moving on to new business under personnel, if there are no objections, I would like to move items 1 through 8 as a block with the following amendments. Under 1, R is being removed, and as per the addendum we received today, we're adding 1T, a new position for Rebecca DiAngelo. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. These items obviously include all the personnel items in number 1. We're also approving the miracles for Mr. Forte and Dr. Kellis tonight.
Can you, Mr. Kellis?
You guys are just welcome.
So, can I ask, this year, did the miracles, that was last month, not this?
They did. These are the miracles the committee felt comfortable recommending to the board. They met prior to the last, the last working session.
I don't really understand the quality of those, the, um...
Good points.
And after this, particularly, maybe the central revenue of the high school, having this scenario, we just, you know, something that's been done, have the support of many sisters, all probably that they're doing, they're not over and above...
This is, this is adding to it because it's, it's also including things like the business administrator, the assistant superintendent, our homeless liaison. It's also adding in a couple other local districts. We've, we've been meeting with Jefferson and Randolph. We also had Mayan Hill in there, and the county, the county VOTEC, so we've expanded it, and we're hoping to get, get a little bit more cohesion between the group, because we find that there's some things going on in one district that would help us if we knew about it in the other district. So it's, it's, it's expanding on that.
About expanded, you know, the, the past year?
Yes. It's 250 walkthroughs throughout the year. Last year, I straightened it about 200, about 20 a month. So this time, it's 25 a month.
So how do you get credit for walkthroughs?
It gets, it gets logged into our Google shared file that we have, and we, we have a pre-made form. Every administrator has it. We, we go through, like, for example, today, I went in here and I did a bunch of them. So you go in the room, you look for three or four specific items, you grade it according to the, to the form, and it gets populated, and then in the end, we run, you can run a report off the form and see how many, who did how many, and what the results are.
And do you do any formal evaluations, or do you, like, do that for the staff?
I, in the past, have not, but I have done evaluations of staff in an informal manner, meaning every, every staff member who gets, who's in year three or four, depending on, actually, two, three, or four, depending on their, their three or four-year tenure status. I've gone in to observe and had meetings with the administration prior, after that, to make decisions on renewals and tenure and all that. So there's a lot of walkthroughs, and there's a lot of observations, and then I also observe all the administrative staff, all the principals, six times a year. That's formally. And then also, anybody else who reports directly to me, they get at least, everyone gets at least two evaluations per year, which includes a meeting, a pre-meeting, and a post-meeting.
And the third party to call, or the second percentage to file the question, how would this be just one, never have that been before, or was our, anything else?
It was, that was in, in a different, in a different field. From walkthroughs, but in a different field, one of the questions that we had. So this one is going to be compare what we, what, what happens in the first month or two to the second, to the last month or two of the year, depending on how many, how much data I can get. So last year, I used two months, to the last two months. It'll probably end up being the same thing, so we have enough data.
Okay, but it's the same concept, right? We're still working on increasing higher order questioning?
We're always working on that.
So we're trying to...
Last year, it wasn't higher order questioning, it was, it was student-to-student interaction. We were looking for less teacher-directed, more student-centered, and we're always looking for that. We're still looking for that now. But we, we're, our focus this year is to increase the type of questioning from a lower-level questioning, like a comprehension question, to a higher-level question, like a synthesis or an evaluation question.
Okay. Anything else on this, or any of the other items?
So, the personal community, I don't know what the other options are, Mr. Luer.
You, I believe you, I believe, I believe I distribute, when I distributed, I distributed highlighted the ones we, we, I did that last week.
There was a proposal applied to, same thing as the board vote, tried to completely move...
Right.
There's also the goal on, on starting a Facebook account.
Hey, Mariana, one of the other, the other one was, yeah, doing Facebook, doing, I think, what, 50 Facebook posts?
Something like that, yeah.
Well, I'll take this one, that one. I just, I just...
I feel like there's something else you'd like to say.
Of course, yeah, but I'm not, I mean, I thought last year, when we sat as a board, and we discussed, you know, walkthroughs and evaluations, that we wanted to make, you know, having formal evaluations, somebody to finish part of miracles, to solve them just to find, it was nice.
If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna? Yes. Mr. Luer?
Yes. I accept, I'm going to vote no on number 3.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes. And moving on to instruction and program, Mrs. Lindsey, would you care to take us through these?
Perfect. If no one has an objection, I advise you to move motion, don't be disrespectful.
Results is... Yeah, the addendum.
Okay. Motion, one, from the Denville, Jay Kaylin.
I have an objection.
Okay.
Before we say, I'd like to carve out number 5, the district goals, as a separate vote.
Sure. I vote two and motion 1 through 4, including motion 1 on the Denville block.
Okay, one more item. On the number in sequence, number 5 is the district goals and the board goals, and then there's the number 5 right after that, on the edicare. So that should be 6, 7, and 8.
No, no, I was just, I was gonna say, I'd like to vote 1 through 4, oh, you're right.
Yeah, there are two 5s.
And 6, 7, 8.
Yeah.
Oh.
6, edicare, ed...
Educare should be 6.
7, and 8, the, you know, the ones.
Okay.
And, thank you, Mr. Luer.
Okay, so...
This is excluding...
This is right, so...
It's everything but the district goals.
Right. Yeah, so discussion, discussions on the other items.
I'll second that.
Uh, Mrs. DeLuna?
Oh, sorry.
She's trying to move on. There's speed, and then there's reckless speed.
I explained 6, that's the last meeting, I think the rest of them, I'm pretty sure they're coming. I actually have a question on motion number 8, by Catherine, the board. And I saw that the one, and I don't have it up in front of me, we're sending gifts, I assume 8, there's a value, you want to do the 3, we're sending, I think, senators to New York City, 6, ladies to the Bronx Zoo, that's what I saw this year, I'm gonna have. I thought a year or two ago, we switched the seventh day trip to Philadelphia, and we haven't realized going back.
Now, these guys up from, may jump in, but I actually was at the Lakeview PTA meeting in...
Valley?
Thank you, Valleyview PTA meeting. And Paul, actually, we actually discussed this at that meeting.
That's where I used to learn about this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He said that they felt that the educational value of going to Philadelphia, they just didn't feel that they were getting a lot out of the trip. They felt...
I think attendance was very low as well.
There was that as well, I think that was a secondary component. But they actually felt like switching it to New York, the, the teachers felt like Philadelphia just was, was not going well.
So I can understand it from a, not a lot of students attending, because the whole reason they were so excited about it was all the educational pie-ins of being in a historical city, seeing the Liberty Valley, seeing all those sites, everything. New York City doesn't say on the field trip, are they going to a Broadway show? I think there's almost no educational value in that, I think. And you don't say it's on the educational ballot.
Well, again, this is what I was told.
It could be attendance.
This is what I was told, and they said that they're actually, they've chosen Blue Man Group this year, as the show was saying.
Okay.
That's historically funny.
Okay, I was just curious, I hadn't heard that the trip to Philadelphia, they were so excited about this, which really had not turned out for what they...
He told me, he told me that it was, it was difficult to kid, to get the kids' interest, keep the kids' interest on the trip. Talked about that a little bit. And that they, they felt strongly that moving back to New York City was a better move for them. That's what he told me.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
See, for, for field trips, technically, the board does not have to approve it unless it's overnight, is that correct?
Or out of the swing.
You know, in, in our, our policy, it says overnight.
Oh, it doesn't say out of state?
No, but it's, it is, it is the norm to approve overnight or out of state. We just have been doing, where you approve all field trips, even if they're, even if they're past, if they've happened before, because we, it's not, it's not a necessity, you don't have to do it. But we've been doing this running list. We already talked about this for a while once, I don't remember how long ago that was. But I don't, I don't mind, you know, if you guys want to add that to the policy, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I don't like when we're doing things, there's, there's a lot we already have to do and review, so we either need to change the policy or not approve, I mean, either, either follow the policy or change the policy, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. I don't know how everybody else feels, but drives me crazy when we do things that are...
Extra and above?
Yeah. Well, extra and above, or, or, we're doing what's appropriate, I mean...
No, I agree with that, though. I, I don't think it has to be on there, you don't have to put it...
But that, that field trip list gets to be like six pages, and then I have to scroll through it by the end of the year, and it's, it gets a little...
Well, it used to just come the new ones, not scrolling through the whole mess.
Do we have a discussion, I remember, I might have suggested that field trips, that we, it'd be a day order, so we're not, you know, you just see the most common ones, not to be approved.
Yeah, that's the way it used to be. You would get the ones you hadn't seen already.
Because when I looked at it, they're kind of mixed together.
And it obviously becomes a burden for the administration, because we're approving stuff that's already happened in the past. And it's not like field trips come around a week ahead of time, they're planned significant amount of time, so it seems like there's a workflow issue getting into the pipeline.
I brought up.
That is on the chart.
I mean, we're already paying the deposits on the hotels for the C1 and M1s. They don't come up at the last minute.
We're into a chart.
Well, we can look into it, I, and speaking, I'm sure correct, that our policy, I haven't looked at it lately, is only for overnight, not for end, out of state, but that is sort of the more typical one, when we talk to the boards.
Would that go to, that would go to IMP, correct? Or...
Yeah.
Because that's where it's actually getting approved under.
It's actually approved, so...
Yeah. So we'll, we'll send it through committee again, and then...
It says, except overnight field trips, which must be approved by the board, the only one.
We'll send it back to committee and come up with a recommendation.
I think that's an excellent one.
So basically, what we're saying is, we don't want to see a list of field trips unless there's an overnight field trip.
Our policy currently says it only needs to be if it's overnight, that it needs to be board-approved. What I'm saying is, let's send it through committee and see if we want to keep that policy. We are currently, currently not following the policy. We're doing above and beyond what the policy is. I guess we're following it, but we're doing extra credit.
Yeah, as of now, you got, the board would approve one field trip a year.
Right.
The trip to DC, that's it, everything else would be approved.
And you got the trip to, that the cheerleaders take to Florida, isn't a school scholarship trip?
No, we're not doing it anymore.
Oh, okay. See, without approval, these things, I don't know what's going on.
All right, so IMP will take a look at that and let us know.
Put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions?
Yes. I don't think you're on that.
No, we haven't voted yet, I'm doing number 1.
Um, the new number 6, former number 5.
Okay, so I sort of spoke about this at the last meeting, this went through committee. This is, okay, why don't you ask your question before I just start talking?
What would the cost be for the year, and is it invited? And I apologize for, you know, making a hard question at, at the last meeting, this is a supplement to the teachers?
No.
No.
This is, this, this, there's currently six kids doing this, so it costs $3,000. And it, believe it or not, it's actually cheaper to do this than it is to have a teacher teach the class. So we could either conflict the kids out and not run the class, which I don't think anybody wants to do that, or we can hire a teacher, which we have to pay one-sixth of their salary to teach one or two kids, or we can offer this class during another class. So instead of the kid not being able to take one of the classes that we'd like them to take, they, they would, now they sit in the, in the regular French or Spanish class, but they get an enriched online experience, and they can move on in language. So for example, we could, we could send a few kids a year to take Spanish or French 3 in high school. They're starting in Spanish or French 3.
So this is like, not an online course?
It's online.
It's online, okay.
Yeah, but they go, so what happens is, the teacher can't teach, like, Spanish 1 and just regular English Spanish?
Yeah.
At the same time. So she might be teaching regular Spanish, and then there's kids with a Chromebook, with earphones on, taking an online class in the same class. And we have six of those, in French and Spanish.
And we did it last year, right? It was smaller, number 1.
We, we did it, this year, we did it, we expanded it to, to help some of those kids that were conflicted out, because the geometry class runs the same time as, it's either, I think it's French 1. So if you want to take French 1, and you eligible for geometry, you can't. Now, as our class sizes get bigger, right, where you have 25 kids now in geometry, you're going to have more conflict. Before, when we only had four kids or something in geometry, you know, it wasn't as big of a deal, but now you have 25, so we're, we're trying to allow the kids to be able to take the class that they're best suited for.
So if a student hits high school in French 3, then what happens?
Great, then they go French 3, French 4, AP French, maybe they start taking another language.
Okay, right, they have an opportunity to...
Some of them do that, yeah.
Right, because they're...
Some kids are really into it.
Right.
You know, you might have a native speaker, you could have, like, we have, one of the kids is from Montreal, so, you know, to him, this is great, he shines, you know, obviously. It's a great time for him to, you know, especially if you're, if you're a second-language kid and you're, and you're struggling with some of the other stuff, but here you are, you know, knocked out of the park. Yeah.
Okay. Anything?
How, how is it decided who's eligible for these classes?
It's a testing process and a teacher recommendation. And then in the end, they have to pass a test for, if they're going to Morris Hills Regional, they have to pass their test for the credit.
Thank you. Anything else on these items? So if not, I will call for a vote on items 1 through 4, and 6, 7, and 8 only.
And then, yeah, okay.
Right, including the denim, thank you. Yep.
This is a B. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna? Yes. Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Now, I would like to move number 5, as the board would be discussing the 2023, and there is a second group, that are the district goals. That would be 4, 4, 4, 4.
I will second.
Mrs. DeLuna already did.
Ah, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, Barb, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They're speeding it, they're...
Yeah. Thank you, Barb. Okay, discussion on our district goals.
Yes. On the 2016-17 board goals, I, we had a lively discussion last meeting about the wording of these goals, and I'll do the edited version of my comments from the last time, okay? We already determined the future location of the Board of Education office. It's going to the municipal building, so I, I don't see why that's a goal. And the participation by board members, to have that as a goal, I mean, that's, that's part of the tour duty, right? You should be able to not have a goal, and you have to do the board's self-evaluation and superpension on these. It's a very important function of the board. And I objected to the word "increase attendance," right? I suggested the word "continue," all right? Because we know everybody here is involved, a lot of different volunteer activities throughout the community, and I think the word "increase," you know, to me, it's a perception that we're not doing enough. So I'll be voting no on the board goals. Come around, please.
So I agree with, on the number 1 board vote, was actually something that we pulled off of Steve's, and I, and I think that, he talked about the fact that, you know, if this is going to be done, it's just coming back, and I think it would be typical to vote with loud, you know, in board votes. You know, I, I get from it, too, there were three times, so I think, well, I think I'll give it a second, I'll give it more.
I know we talked about this at the last two meetings, are there any other suggestions for other board goals?
What if number 1 wasn't just to determine the location, but to actually sign, you know, finalize it and actually move into the location? Because we're nowhere near that. I mean, we're, you know, I mean, I think it's going to happen, but we're nowhere near that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, again, and I understand that the logic behind it, but like I said, you know, Steve, I know, and I believe that you, there's a lot of work that's to it, and we have, and there's one year goals, and... Yeah, I think it's going in that direction, and I think if we're going to hold it to that standard, then we as a board should be held to the same standard. And if, if I sat in that room and I said to you, hey, that's low-hanging fruit, I think we can do better, and I think as a board, we have to say the same thing, we can't, holding to a different standard. I, I think that it's going to happen, it's going forward, you know, we got to optimize across the Ts, I wouldn't want that it's necessarily a goal.
Okay, so we spent, as a board, minus the two of you, four hours or something, with New Jersey school boards creating these goals. And you guys objected to it last meeting, after not being in attendance at the meeting before. So I'm willing to hear other suggestions, and other than that, if you don't have a suggestion to put on the table right now, I'm going to do Robert's rules and say I called motion. I'm going to do Robert's rules and say I call the motion. Because I don't want to relive this again. I already lost, you know, eight hours of my life to this.
So.
Well, you changed, on number three, you changed, take out the word creation.
Well, no, I actually like.
Continue attendance. Okay?
Let's, let's stay, let's stay, let me, let's, we'll work to that. Let's, let's focus on number one first. Because I think number one, by your guys' reasoning, is a complete rewrite. So let's talk about what that idea would be. And like Mrs. Lindsay said, I'm totally open to another idea, but what is that idea?
You know, I think one for 2016, we just talked about contract negotiations. I think a goal for the board, although I'm on here for a couple of months, would be to complete the contract negotiations by the end of the school year.
Don't we do that most of the time anyway?
Nope.
Nope.
Yeah.
DEA is never.
I don't, I don't want to tie the negotiation committee's hands. It wasn't our.
Either you, I mean, either you achieve it or you don't.
It's not, it's not within our control, really.
So you only want to do things as a goal that you know are going to happen?
No.
No.
Do things that we can control.
So like, you're a superintendent.
I mean, they're pretty punitive about not achieving a goal, but having something that you're reaching for is fine.
There's definitely nothing punitive. We've had that, we've had goals out there for years after years that we never hit, unfortunately. So I agree with putting something on there that we can, that is achievable, because it seems like we never do. I mean, people look at number two and would say, that's a slam dunk. That's a ridiculous goal.
We didn't make it last year.
Guess what? We didn't hit it last year.
I'm not arguing number two. I'm not arguing number two. I don't think there's anything wrong with having a goal that we may not actually achieve. But if we work towards it and we give it the best college try, and come up a little bit short, it is what it is. But to have something to show the public and show our staff that we're serious about trying to complete things rather than have that open for how long we've had in the past, I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
How about assist with the development of the strategic plan? That's a, one of the most important things we're going to do this year.
We're going to have our meetings, three, three, three board members, right, are potentially going to be part of the team?
Like that. Well, you could have three different ones at each meeting.
Right. We can change it up. We're up to three.
Go hand in hand with number three.
Agreed.
The good thing about it is, I mean, it puts the weight of the board behind what we all think. I hope everybody thinks it's a very important process.
Like you said, I think it's, I think it's one of the most important things we're going to do, right? I mean, we all feel, I feel, I feel that way. I can't speak for all of you.
I agree. And I have no problem switching you to the goal, Steve.
I'm just trying to throw out some stuff.
No, that's not a bad one at all.
Yes, the only thing wasn't really on you to throw out something, because you were fine where we were.
Yeah. Thank you for helping.
I, I'm, I feel pretty strongly about number three. I think that when we talk about supporting our staff, supporting our schools, having board members present at every possible event. I just emailed Steve about the anti-bullying program on Wednesday during the day that I may be able to carve some time out of my day from work to come over for. I think having board members at every possible event, we can't be at everything, but doing our best to think about it. And me initiating that with Steve was really because of this goal. Because I said, you know, we want to increase our attendance. If possible, I'm going to try to see what I could do to try to be at these events, to see what they're about. We approve them on the agenda. I'd love to know what it's all about. So I think that's part of, I think that's part of supporting our staff. Because if our staff sees us there, they're going to realize that we're supporting the programs that they're, they're bringing forth.
I think that's a fair, a very, very fair point. And I, and I think it validates the document. I would, I would say that. Like I said, my, my biggest objection, maybe a little bit different than Don, is number one. But, and again, I just can't in good conscience say that it's okay for the board but not for the district president.
Fair enough. So are we, we all, do we all like the idea of changing that to, to support and, I'm at a loss for the word.
Assist, assist in the, in the creation of a five-year, development of the five-year strategic plan.
Does that?
Assist and support or just assist?
I, I think, I, I want to support that. I think assisting makes it seem like we're being part of it. And the whole goal of this is for us to not be directly part of it, right? The goal is for the input from the community, from the business leaders, from everybody else to kind of talk about where do you want the district to go. If we're assisting with it, then it makes it seem like we're, we have our hand in it. And that's the whole, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the goal of having the strategic planning, is to not have the board direct, we can come up with our own five-year strategic plan. We don't need to pay school boards. We don't need to have a meeting. We could just come up with what we think is right. But that's, to me, not the goal of the strategic planning. So I would say support is fine, but assist, to me.
Gets a little too, too active?
Yeah.
Makes it sound like we have a thumb on the scale.
Yeah.
But I mean, at the end of the day, we are talking about participating because we need to, we need to show the community this is important to us. You know, this process is important. So it's a bit of a fine line. That's, that's my.
I just, I, I guess beyond the wording, I want to make sure that we're all clear and agree upon what the strategic plan is, since we brought it up and.
Well, you usually participate. I like to participate in support.
Participate, fine, yes.
By the way, you, you did the opening address where you're designated.
Well, and I, I believe she said if we all wanted to be there, you could just advertise that opening one as a public meeting.
Which would be, which would be nice. I mean, we should talk about that.
Participate and support.
Because that's, that's a, that's a fair point. Sorry to interrupt, but if we're going to put it down as a goal, and then we all can't participate, and it's kind of a weird goal, because you're like, well, this is a great goal that I'm not even going to show up to, because I can't be there because of, you know, public meeting rules, so.
But if you put support, there's so much more that you could do in support, besides even being at the meeting.
Yep.
Participate and support.
Okay, so.
So.
Mrs. Deluna, if you're in agreeance, since you seconded the motion, I would like to change item number one under the 2016-17 board goals to now re-participate and support in the process of a five-year strategic plan. Is that what people?
In the creation?
Creation or development?
Development.
One of those.
Development.
Participate and support in the creation of a five-year.
Creation or development?
I think development.
You like create. I like development a little better, but.
Yeah, I think development.
Just one, you don't vote both? And in the development?
I think there's.
Yeah.
Of a five-year strategic plan. Okay, as amended.
Okay. Correct. Okay.
All right. Now, number three, are we reading as increase? Or, I mean, you know, we talked about, again, measures.
You can shuffle that letters at the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's my concern.
My concern is not measurable.
Every school, every community, that's a goal.
Well, but, I mean, is, is the new number one goal measurable? I guess you could say participate. Nobody shows up, and I guess you could say we didn't participate.
Well, if you, no, it is measurable, because you're going to vote on the goals. So if you vote no on the goals, obviously, it's support or, or support, right?
Sure. We're envisioning more than that. We're envisioning.
Oh, I'm not sure that's what it means.
I do think it's.
I reserve the right to.
Because I don't, I don't know if all of you would vote yes if you weren't supporting it as, as the process was playing out.
Sure. You know, to Dave's point earlier, you know, none of these goals are meant to be punitive. I said this at the last meeting. I really have no problem with increased attendance. I guess it does fall down on the measurable aspect of it. I still like the goal, though. So I'm voting for it.
Well, no one in the broader community can measure whether or not we had 100% participation. That's amongst ourselves and the.
No, we can't.
Yeah, but we don't have to know who fell down on the job when you don't have all 100% doing the completion. And I personally know myself how many events I attend. So like, if I make an effort to attend something else this year that I don't normally attend, no one in the community is holding us accountable to even showing up at these meetings.
You can really, it's not really.
You're totally fine.
All right. Can I just call the vote?
Yes.
Okay. I call the vote.
Second.
Can we just read that again? Do we want a second? No, I'm just, I'm calling the vote. You don't need a second.
I thought you were doing the.
No, Barb already seconded the motion.
No, I thought you were doing the, I thought you were calling the question.
Yeah, I'm calling the question. Let's vote on motion number five.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
On district goals, one through four, yes. On board goals?
It's just one motion.
I don't think you can, yeah.
It's just one.
We didn't split it. Back you down.
Did you vote yes or no?
No.
It's all, it's all the same motion.
And at this point, it really doesn't matter.
Beautiful.
He can vote that way. I mean, I don't know that anyone here is going to care.
Yes. You put me down, no.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes. Excellent. Okay, moving on to finance. Mrs. Deluna, would you care to take us through this? And I believe we are, I'll let you move it. We're going to need to read in a new item.
Um, I don't see.
No, the, the checks motion is not.
So we're going to need to add, I think, are we?
I can, I can read it in if you guys want. I've got the check numbers and the, and the values. Bill's list is not on here.
So are we going to?
Maris will handle that.
Okay.
She'll read it.
Okay.
Okay. What's on the agenda first, something to add? Um, this is objection, I'd like to add as a, I'd like to leave as a block items one through nine explicitly. We have the schedule of tax monies, the safety grant we discussed last time for $1,000, donations from the Lakeview PTA for Chromebooks, and the Chromebook bags from the Department of Dental. We have our annual shared services agreement with the Educational Service Commissioner of Morris County. Um, the note, doing your favorite, annual note, action. Number seven, donation on the format from the Lakeview PTA. Item number eight is disposing of eight outdated FM systems. And number nine, workers' comp insurance.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I have to, I also have to read the bills list. We also have to read the bills list in total of $2,858,285.99.
Do you want to make that one to number ten?
I think that's different. That's different than the value I have. That's got to include the payroll, but payroll is usually broken out separately.
To Maris, will we break out the payroll separately in these numbers?
That is including paper.
What was the total number? I don't think that's a number. Well, I've got a different number.
What do you have?
I've got $2,858,238.93. And I've ran that number a few times.
I'm just looking at a total bills list that I have in front of me.
I know you can zoom that in.
No, no need to.
You have your own eyes.
It's a whole check from Slazin'. I, is it because the voided checks are on here? No. So that, if you add these up separately, they come up to a different number? I've run these number three.
Is there something, you know, is there?
Well, this is totals for the regular checks is 162469308.
Total postage checks. Thank you for.
Thank you for, yes. Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Total for these checks, which are, the hand checks are 346.
Okay, it's a, the handout says total postage checks, $2,858,585.
Apparently there's a. Apparently there's a $300 worth of.
Yeah.
Voided checks, so that there's another number that, the only difference is that it's 285.99 instead of.
58.
585.99.
Mike, you, I mean, you are adding the voided checks to $100.
What is that?
Total manual voided check entries.
$300.
So what, what is, what is the 16? But I'm taking the 1, 1,624,69308. That's already got the, the voided check in there, correct? The voided checks. You're saying take that 300 back out of the 162469308? Are you following me?
I am following you.
So page 28 has a 1,624,69308, right? If you take that number, 69308.
That has the $300.
Still in it.
Included in there, so we had to subtract the 300 dollars.
But that's, the total is after the 300. How can that be?
Because the $300 was already posted on that total, the 585.99. And if you look at page, the very last page, the grand total, that is subtracting the 300.
Is it going to come back out?
That's what I had originally.
Right. But no, if you go all the way down. Right there.
This one's right out of the chest.
No, but then go up.
Grand total.
It's, that's the two. So where did the, where did the 300 come out?
It's the very last page. If you go to the very bottom of the file.
Yeah, I see it, but it's weird.
But it's not ever taken out.
It, well, it, yeah, I mean.
It is in the grand total.
Yeah, but, but from where?
It's added in, it's never pulled out. The question is, do we need to approve reprints on voided checks? Because if we do, then we have to approve them, and 300's got to be in there.
You are approving the $2,858,285.99.
Okay. Are we approving checks number 1154 and 1155?
Where do you see the one?
It's on page 28.
Page 28. Those are the two voided checks that make up.
Are we approving them?
$300. So did those checks need to be rewritten, or are they voided and they're gone?
They're reprints.
What does that say there?
Reprint.
Oh, yeah.
If they're just reprints, we shouldn't have to approve them, correct?
Why don't you put it in there?
Right here.
28.
Right here. Page 28.
They're not really voided checks. I don't know why it says void check entries, because it says reprint. So if it's a reprint, we should not have to approve a reprint on a check. Therefore, the 300's to come out, and I don't see the 300 coming out anywhere.
You are approving the reprint. What, what the system is doing is putting it in, taking it out, and reprinting it again. So the grand total is deducting the $300 that we had.
Where is the 300 coming out?
Where is it coming from?
No, negative. Where's the minus 300?
You're not going to see it in this report because it's got to be approved. But you do, you go up to.
Why are we approving a reprint? We shouldn't approve a reprint. If it's a reprint of a check, it's not a void and a rewrite of a check. We already approved that check.
I guess it's the way the report is being generated, is showing the void as well as the actual checks.
Because it's showing it twice.
I was just, if you go.
It's not showing it twice.
It shows total posted. It has the 300 in there.
Yes. Yes. Where does it take it out on the last page? It doesn't.
It doesn't actually take it out. It's loaded on, it's noted.
Grand total is $300 left.
Well, I know, we're, we, we.
The report takes it out.
Yeah, right. I mean, it doesn't have a line.
Where?
Mike, the very last, I have, do you want to see this report?
Sure. It says, I mean, that's like.
Look at the last, the very last page.
I understand, I'm looking at the same thing, but I don't see the total where that's taken out. So if you go back up to page 28. The check numbers, before you get to payroll, are total checks, were 1,624,693, 693, 8 cents. Does that include the 300, or not the 300? Cause the 300, right above it, so I assume it includes it.
It's including the 300.
Okay, so then if you scroll down, all, now take that number.
So where between page 28 and page 32, does that number come back out again?
Correct.
That's Mike's question. We're, we're understanding that it came back out somewhere, but we don't see that it came back out.
You are not gonna see that voided check.
Okay, I am not voting for this checks list then. Cause I don't understand where the money is coming out, cause when I add the totals up by hand, I get a different number.
Can you read you the check number, the voided check number?
Well, you can, but I'm not, I can't, I can't vote on it tonight if I don't have that information in front of me.
All right, so these were checks that were written to replace previously approved checks, is that correct?
Don't look at me, I don't know.
This is not the, I, I, I object to us moving a motion that we normally don't move in that manner. We normally do not move the payroll with the checks. So I strongly suggest that we do it the same way we normally do it, which is a line item for the check numbers and a line item for payroll. Maybe that would be easier. Cause I've got checks number, can you check my check number, Damaris?
I'm sorry?
Okay, so I've got check numbers 1, 1, 4, 4 through 1, 3, 7, 3. Is that correct?
I don't have the bills list in front of me, so who can tell me?
All right, you guys can move it if you want. Obviously, nobody else has a problem, cause nobody's asking questions.
You're doing a good job asking questions.
You're, you're covering it for us.
I object to it not being on the agenda.
I, I agree with that, so it should be on the agenda for you.
And I don't know how I missed it when I was reading the agenda, but I read it last night.
It's very tough in the purple's right now.
I know, but we actually do have bills to pay. Apparently over $2 million. Close to 3, but we don't have to get angry.
Let's start with that, sure. 8, 8, 6, 3, 5, 9, 25, correct? It's right on page 31. It's check number 9, 0, 9, 0, 9, 2, 0, 1, 6. It's one payroll check, is that correct?
What was the page number?
31.
30. See this? See this I can read. Yours is too small.
No, the payroll, the payroll, I'm, I'm just, this number. So let me read you the payroll, the total payroll versus the. Okay. Total payroll is 1,233,592.91. And regular checks is 1,624,693,08.
Okay, so pay, how, how is that? So that's not what we normally, how we normally move it. Normally move it as one check number for payroll. And that would indicate to me that payroll would be 8, 86, which would be check number 9, 0, 9, 0, 9, 2, 0, 1, 6. You're quoting the other hand checks, right?
Because there's hand checks that are part of payroll.
Which ones are part of payroll?
If you look at the, uh, the first one, 9, 9, 0, 0, 1, 3, DCRP, that's part of payroll.
Okay, that's, okay.
The other one is check number 9, 0, 9, 0, 9, 2, 0, 1, 6, that's part of payroll.
Yep.
Two, okay.
Uh, the other ones, if you go down to page 32, uh, 17-00738, that's part of payroll.
Ooh, I don't see any check numbers on 7, page 32.
All of a sudden, on page 32, it's just.
On page 32, 1,200, $1,240.
That's not page 32, according to what we have for a bills list.
We're looking at this.
What was the number again?
So you have 33 pages, we have 32 pages.
Yeah. It formatted, it formatted differently.
We have to.
We can't actually not vote on this.
It's payroll.
Unless you wanna have another meeting.
And payroll.
I, I understand that, but we, we have, I understand the issue.
It's all there. It's, this is the way that it all prints out. Certainly not. It's not as misleading as going.
No, but it's not a technicality to approve checks. It's not a technicality to approve checks. It's $2 million worth of taxpayer money here. I suggest.
I apologize, that motion got deleted out of the agenda. It was all detailed, um, previously, and something has happened.
I suggest we table it for, well, not table, I guess we can't.
We can.
We can't table until later in the meeting.
You don't have to vote no on the motion.
Number 10.
So what would happen? You, you could vote no on it, cause it's already.
Right, we've already moved it.
It's moved. We're gonna have to have a separate, a special meeting.
Just to.
Right away, like Friday or Thursday, to, to approve the bills list.
Well, you know.
48 hours, so you have Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We could get it in.
By Friday.
You have a meeting Friday. It could be any time of the day, it could be, you know, something like that, but we have, we have to do.
But you have to have a forum.
You have to have the forum.
Yeah, we have to get four people there.
Right. You know, I, I feel the same way. I'm not ready to approve this as is.
I guess I don't understand what the issue is over the 300. Like, this is the report format that you're objecting to. It's a standard report. Like, I don't, I'm not following. It's a $300 when you're perceiving as a discrepancy, because we paid for it.
This is not, what, what was moved as a motion is not remotely close to what we normally move as a motion. So if you guys are comfortable with moving, with approving it, and you feel comfortable with 2.8 million dollar worth of checks, that's fine. I mean, you guys can approve it. I, I don't feel comfortable with it personally, that's me. The number I come up with, when I do my math, is a different number that Damaris is, is moving for. If it was the same number, I would say, let's move it. I mean, I would approve it, but I, I don't have the same number. There's a lot of numbers on this report. The numbers that are being set for payroll don't match what I see on here for payroll. I mean.
Yes, you're right. The, I pulled up the motion from August. It lists an amount with the check numbers that correspond to it. As a current expense, and then it lists a separate number with a description number that is for the payroll.
Is there anything that we can do now to make people comfortable to vote on this? If there's not, you can call a vote, and then we'll have to have a separate meeting, a special meeting to vote on it.
I'd be comfortable, number one, like we said, if we can determine the number for payroll and how you got it. Because I believe that the number for payroll is 886,359.25, which is check number 9, 0, 9, 0, 9, 2, 0, 1, 6, on page 31 of the report I have. That appears to me, based upon this list, to also include check number 9, 9, 0, 0, 1, 3. If not, then I would understand it will be a $47.06 difference. But on this list, I don't see how that checks pulled out separately, or where the subtotal is for.
So the difference, Mike, between the 886 and the 1.2 million, that.
Yeah, but the 1.2 million is including hand checks, which hand checks is one for Toys R Us. Right? 6, 8, 3, 1, 4. That's not part of payroll. That's on page 29. And state health benefits is usually not part of payroll.
Ooh, get back here.
Yeah, that's what's listed under hand checks. Toys R Us and.
We often have separate check numbers that are 9, 9s, that are hand checks, that are not included with.
You're, you're right. The health, you're right. The health, I was including a health benefit number in there. So the payroll total is on that page that you're looking at, that I'm gonna have 886,359.25.
Okay.
Because I wasn't including the health benefits on that column, and the other ones.
Okay, so then. Okay, so that gets us halfway there. So then, if we go back to page 28. And you look at the 1.624, that number, right? Why don't you, can you look at the email? That was sent to us?
He's got it, he's got it, he's got it.
Page 28 has a total for current checks, check series number 1, 1,624,693.8.
Right.
Okay. So that appears to me to be, correct me if I'm wrong, that includes all of our normally posted checks, which is 1, 1, 4, 4 through 1, 3, 7, 3.
Correct.
Plus, it includes checks 1, 1, 5, 4 and 1, 1, 5, 5.
That is correct.
Okay. So it's 693.08. Okay. So if I take that number and I add in the hand checks, which there is one hand check for Toys R Us for 1,100. 1,100. 19.84 cents, plus I add in our health benefits, 204,469.49, plus the second health benefit, which is 141,597.27. That comes out to the original number I had, which was 1,971,879.68.
Can you repeat that number again? I got that different number.
I've done this calculation three times and got that same number, so I'm, certainly could be wrong, but I'm pretty confident in that number.
I think you're giving out the Toys R Us.
Nope.
No.
I added that in.
No.
What's that? Sure, total for checks, 1,971,879.68.
That's what I got when I added the three hand checks.
Plus all the other checks.
And does that add up to 2.85?
No, that's part of the problem, is if you add that number plus the payroll, you get a different number than with the total.
No, I just, I just spit it myself too. It is 1,971,879.68. These two numbers, those two. This is only those two.
Then if I add in 31.
I'm doing two, plus payroll.
And you get to the, you're back to the 2, 8, 5, 8. Well, you know, you're 2, 3, 8, right.
2, 3.
You're coming to 2, 3, 8, right.
Yes. Which is.
The $300.
What's, that's not $300 difference.
To the 2, 5, I did it. Oh, the 2, the 5, 5, oh, is it? Oh, jeez.
It's like a.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I hit the old one.
If it was $300, I would say, there's the issue. It's not.
It isn't. It is actually another.
And we can move that forward, but I'm telling you that those two numbers that we just mentioned do not add up to the total grand total at the bottom of this list. So I have no idea how they're getting that grand total.
Okay, but could we agree to move the checks starting with 1, 1, 4, 4 and ending with check number?
Although these are.
I, I get the total on my page. I agree to the total.
The total being which total?
2,800. I get 2,800,558,238.93.
Okay, so, Mike, do you agree that if you start with the checks 1, 1, 4, 4, go to check 1, 3, 7, 3, and go to 1, 6, 2, 4, 6, 1, 2, 4, 0, 8, and write that motion exactly like you normally do it? That's what it says in the amount and the description. The check number starting and ending. Can you read that number?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. There's a $47 difference. I'm trying to see if there's a check for 47, 06, because that's the difference. Or where that 47, 06 from?
I will tell you exactly where that is. That's 47, 06.
Yep.
On page 31 of my page. You have to add that as well, as part of the payroll.
Page 29. That's what it is.
29?
Where it says total.
That's it.
It's 9, 9, 0, 0, 1.
So the pension.
Oh, yeah.
The DCRP.
DCR, okay, yeah.
That's it. Okay. So that means that the total for payroll is not the number we had before. It's not the 8, 86, 3, 59.
You need to add the 47, add 47, 06 to your number.
So our payroll, I think, should be 8, 86, 4, 0, 6, 31 cents. And that gives us the total on the grand total on the bottom of the sheet. I am good with moving that.
Okay, so the format from the August agenda, can we read it into the.
Yeah.
Beated resolve, the Board of Education of the township of Denville, approve the enclosed checklist in the following amount. The first amount is going to be. 1, 6, 2, 4, 6, 9, 3, 0, 8, is that right?
No, 1, 9, 7, 1, that number.
So, you need to number 9.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, 1.
9, 7, 1.
8, 7, 9, 6, 8.
Correct.
And the next.
Well, that's.
Description, it should say check number 1, 1, 4, 4 to check number 1, 3, 7, 3.
And? And three hand checks.
Now, oh yes.
68314.
68314.
990012. And 990013.
Okay, plus three hand checks. Okay, so that's the first item in the BEA result. And the second item in the BEA result will be the payroll amount, which, once we add the 886 plus the $47, you get 886...
868. Sorry, 886, you're right, sorry. Yes.
And then it should say payroll, oh, and I don't have a payroll number, I gotta go... All right, that's how we have it read into the motion.
Okay.
And in parentheses, in this August one, it says it's the July payroll, we need to have it in parentheses, this is the... What payroll is this, the September, August?
This is the September payroll.
Okay, so in parentheses, we'll have September payroll.
And, um...
Oh, okay. What's wrong?
Well, in August, we approve July.
September 15 payroll.
September 15, okay.
September 15 payroll.
Okay, this is motion number 10.
Okay, so that gets us...
I'll move that.
Okay, so at this point, I'm a little lost as to where we are in that. Right now, we have 1 through 10 is blocked and just read into the agenda by Mike.
Correct.
Yep, 10 will be the motion we just moved.
It's been seconded?
It was, it was already, yeah.
Well, Bart moved it and we just finished moving it.
I seconded it.
Okay, and Mike seconded.
Yep.
And those numbers, John, that the original 285, you're just putting it out?
Correct. That's how we normally have it.
Okay. Okay, everybody good?
Yeah. Did you attract them to system?
Thank you.
Who else is going to this meeting?
Do they go in the trash, the FM systems? When we dispose of them?
These are really old ones that don't work.
They're really old. We still have them and I'm actually sitting in my own portal of this right now.
Okay, I'm asking, are they going in the trash? Are we reselling them? Can we recycle them?
We'll, we try, we don't know what to do with them right now.
If we can sell them, can we recycle them and Division will even come up and pick them up to recycle them?
We can put them in recycling. They'll take it.
The town.
Yeah, but the, the green division will recycle it and get...
Get some funds, or hopefully, or something. Whatever, I mean, right.
They don't give us anything, but we can ask them to take it.
They'll be happy to come and pick them up.
These are the, these are the classroom FM. These are the old versions of...
Well, when they say that they're personal, I'm assuming these are the ones where the students used to carry them around with them in Valley View from room to room? Is that what they are, instead of the ones that would be installed in the ceilings?
They, yes, right, they're handheld.
Yes, they say personal FM system. I don't think it's the teacher ones. You guys weren't on the board back when students at Valley View had to carry around the little FM system themselves from classroom to classroom. Wasn't the one, that's how old those were.
The technology.
It's pretty old.
Of the time.
Okay. Anyone else? If not...
Do we know why skim milk costs a penny more a half pint than 1% milk?
More work, extra skimming.
Is that, is that really why?
I am sure it is.
Probably more processing or something. I mean, I'd just be guessing. I have no idea.
More skimming, more sugar. Sugar's probably...
I was under the impression, the way they made 1% of it, they made skim milk and then added back in.
And then the chocolate is another 60...
Well, that doesn't surprise me, because they're adding, they're adding...
All right, these are, these are, these are questions that could have, could have been raised earlier. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Um, yes, I need to abstain on check number 1151.
Mrs. Dillinger?
Yes.
Miss number one?
Yes.
Mrs. Lancy?
Okay, yes, except on the bills list, I would like to abstain on check number 1201.
Mr. Cass?
Number one, number six. Yes, on the rest.
Oh, you love to get the milk. All right, I like it, I like it.
One day it is, some kid's not gonna get milk.
Exactly. Uh, yes, but I also have to abstain on the bills list, check number 1151. Okay. Moving on to buildings and grounds, Mr. Cass, would you care to move us through this?
I'm asking to approve resolutions 1, 2, and 3. Number one, is that the board we sent from the August 15th meeting? Building grounds, number two, lease for use of value for Thinkwork Incorporated. And number two is a proposal for our over consents to complete change order number one for additional concrete work, windowway mirror installation, the bus garage, the amount of $4,000. Number three is that we approve diamond construction, complete change order number one for concrete sidewalk completion at various locations of Lakeview School, the amount of $8,825. Second.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns about these items?
Number two and three are already completed jobs, correct?
Three is, two is not. Two we're working on now.
Got it.
What happens a lot is, we start the project and like, man, we should have put a gutter here. That's dumb, not put in the gutter, because then I find out that the freezing water breaks up the concrete, so, you know, and then, and it, we're all well, well under budget on everything, so that's why we decided to add it in.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lord?
Yes.
Mrs. Lancy?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yeah.
Mr. Capellum?
Yes. Okay, seeing nothing in transportation, we can move to good of the cause. Committee meetings, any items to discuss? Uh, committee reports, sorry.
Um, not committee reports, but I know you brought it up at the last meeting, that this Wednesday, September 28, we have the Morris County School Board Association meeting, where they're going to be talking about school funding and our very own, is it just you Sandy?
Paul and Seth are gonna come with me, but I'm presenting.
Okay, so, one of our own is gonna be presenting and, well, three of us, three of our administrators will be there presenting. I just, um, I normally attend this. I'm conflicted with another district meeting that I'm supposed to be at. I'm supposed to be at CPAC February, so I just was wondering if any other board members are gonna be able to make it to support our admin.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Okay, all right, so then I will feel less guilty about going and being our CPAC days on the national level. I'm sorry I missed it?
That's okay.
Seems like, uh, if I might say, an increase in attendance at that event?
For the record. For the record, that would be an increase.
That would be an, that would absolutely be an increase.
And, and, um, I'm happy that Mr. Forte also, I'm not sure when our next meeting in October is, but, uh, October 13, Jed Baker presentation is a very big meeting. As of this moment, um, Steve, the district calendar just lists it, it doesn't list the time of it?
It doesn't?
If you click on the event, it does.
It does, okay.
Because there's separate times for...
Teachers.
Staff, and then parents, yeah.
Okay, I just...
My fault, because I remember seeing the time.
Yeah, you gotta kinda click in it, it's a little...
Okay, when you...
Just a...
What, I have to click the Hobbie?
Yes. Oh, I don't know on the phone. I know on the website, so...
Well, I just want people to be able to hear it. It is 7 to 9.
We have RSVPs too, going out.
Okay.
I mean, invitations with RSVPs.
Hey, very good. I had a, I was at the Valley View PTA meeting. Um, they're kicking off a lot of the initiatives for the year. They are still looking for officers. They have a president and they have a treasurer, so right now they have the bare minimum. They are definitely interested with, for parents who might be willing to step up to be VP in some of the other positions. That's all I have.
I know I attended last week the Foundation of Danville golf outing. Great turnout from the public. I think they had 70 golfers, one of their best turnouts, um, as well as a lot of folks that, uh, parents and community members that came out for the dinner only, so, um, overall, really successful event. Um, I know the foundation thanked, uh, everybody who was there, and, uh, they're waiting for their final totals to be combined together, but as soon as they have that, I'll let everybody know. But I think it was by far one of the more successful events, and, uh, they were really excited to have so much, uh, participation. I know, uh, Dino was there, so, and Steve was there, a bunch of our administrators, a lot of our teachers. It really was a really great turnout, so...
Anything else anybody'd like to discuss? All right, if not, I will open up for the second public comment session of the evening at 8:50.
Are you kidding? You said for all this, and you're going to say that?
We, we applaud you for sitting through that.
We used to have another, we used to have another board comment section there.
Yeah, the board comments, actually, yeah, the board, the board comment section, yeah.
We kinda have to add it in, just in case there's public comments that we wanna come out, right?
Yeah, that should be there.
Yeah.
Excellent.
You, you, you know the drill.
Twisted her arm, Dave.
Nancy Witty, 11 Shawnee Trail, uh, in Danville. Um, I was approached by a bus driver, uh, we were just in casual conversation, and she's having a lot of difficulty with cars passing her on Route 53 when she's stopping. It happened that one day that a state trooper was picking up his child and noticed five cars passing on the wrong side. She also stated she actually had a car come up the right side of the bus just as a kid was gonna step off. And luckily, she saw it coming, slammed the doors closed, so the child didn't step in front of the car. Um, I took it and I let the police chief know, and they did, did follow the bus for two or three days, uh, to see what was happening, and, um, of course, nobody passes it when there's a police car near the place. There was nothing there, but they're gonna try to be more vigilant, especially on Route 53, because it's becoming very dangerous. So I just wanted to know that we did pass it on to the police.
Thank you very much.
But they mostly, that we should have a camera on?
Right.
No, she can't have a camera on her bus, because her bus is an old bus that is due to be replaced, and so it's, the cameras are not su... Because I asked that same question. It's not such that they can put it on the bus and take it off the bus and put it on another bus. Once it's on, it's on, period.
Well, we're switching the bus, so we're gonna have a different bus.
Okay.
You're gonna get a different bus.
That'll be good.
We're waiting to get it back in ser... Once it's in service, they'll have a camera on it and be...
That's that, because that's important, because I, I told her, I would, if she felt it was necessary, I could sit some afternoons nearby and just take down license plates and start to pass if she needed it, but if, if she's gonna have a camera, we'll be good.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Are we gonna be having cameras on, I, I know we're, we're not planning on getting a whole bunch of new buses at once. We're thinking about like, one a year or something like that?
Buses or cameras?
Buses. We're, we're planning on phasing, we, we recycle the buses, yeah. Are we planning on having the new buses all have cameras on them?
They do, yeah.
When we buy a new bus, we put, we put the cameras on it. It doesn't come with it, though.
Okay.
It has to be done aftermarket.
But the buses we put in ser... The new buses we put in service this year, was it one or two?
There's one.
One did have a camera, correct?
It can't come with it, though.
But we put it on.
We're putting it on.
We are...
Reason is because it's proprietary, so the bus company deals with somebody else. We don't want, like, to have different cameras. We want, you know, a unit.
We have a vendor that we use for the cameras.
That's what we do. The point is, when we get a new bus, before we put it in service, we are going to have a camera on it from now on.
Well, I can't guarantee it'll be before we put it in service, but it'll be put on as soon as we possibly can. There's a lot of moving parts, like sometimes the bus might be ready, but we wanna use it.
That's fine.
You know what I mean?
We just wanna make sure.
But yeah, the plan is anytime we get a new bus, we're gonna add a camera to it.
But the, so, so I guess that's a, that's a good point, because my understanding was that the cost of the camera was built into the lease, but it can't be now.
Uh, yeah, if we are...
It can, because it's financing's different.
We're purchasing a bus for that particular year, we can purchase the camera.
So the one we put in service this year, the lease included, okay, that's what I understood.
It's a little difference of financing and the bus.
Because the financing part does it. It's not the bus and company that does the leasing. Okay.
And we, and they do have a camera, but it's just not the exact one we have.
So we're buying an aftermarket camera, but we're able to finance it as part of the lease of the bus.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Are we opening up for board comments?
Uh...
I have one more thing I forgot to mention.
Yes, I can do that. Okay, so, uh, I'm actually gonna close for public comments and open up very briefly for board comments.
I did actually have one thing I did wanna mention that I think, um, we as a board and probably the council, I'd like to partner with the council on this, to understand some of the, um, master plan and initiatives. I know we talked at length about the master plan, but it seems like some projects are starting to at least get some momentum. I've seen some things on the website about, uh, the, the 50, Route 53 project, which could potentially have an impact on our school district. We seem to spend a lot of money on demographic studies and then find out things a few months later that affect what they could have done. So if we partner together, maybe we can, is this just rhetoric or...
The whole thing that came out about the Redwood Press area rehabilitation, it's gonna be very similar to the Essling Lake rehabilitation, where we get extra credit for the rental units that are going to be low-income housing. It's still, even though we approved the, to start looking at it, it's still a long way off. And what, and the biggest hurdle that we're gonna have to overcome is the traffic. How they're gonna get into it, because one entrance can be on 53. They have suggested another exit only on two-station road, which would, is, is really not a good idea for the people who live and have to use that one light, especially if the state follows through on their plan to close the Laplona Crossing. Down at, where, near Votech, they wanna close that off completely and not make the station road the only crossover of the trades. Uh, it's, it's, um, the town is totally against it, and we're trying to fight it, because that is an extra way for people to get out of that area. The state is saying that temporary road that was put in right on, um, for the Essling Lake, they put a temporary road in case there's a problem and they have to get in. Now, the state's saying that's a real road and could be used all the time. No, it's never even gonna be paved, so I don't know where they're getting that idea. But, uh, certainly we'll keep you in the loop on anything. This, this is, was definitely in the long planning stages to help meet what could be our COA responsibilities. We have no idea still. The courts are still fighting over what our COA responsibilities are gonna be, but this is the first, just the first look at to see what it's gonna be. Right now, they're planning on a 60 one- and two-bedroom unit. People could walk right from their back door to the mount table train station, so they're looking at it to be a much more of a transit, uh, community rather than using the roads as much, but there's certainly gonna be some car traffic there. Probably be about three stories high, with living on the first and second floor, then extra meeting rooms and things like that, and a gym up on the top floor.
Is the town, is the town looking to defer, um, tax revenue to the school district yet?
Uh, there was some talk about it being a pilot program. There are a lot of different things that they have to, conditions that have to be met to make it a pilot like they did Essling.
Yeah, under, what were the circumstances by which they thought that was a solution to the school district?
What, the Essling Lake?
Yeah, and deferring tax revenue. I mean, if we're gonna be, if the school district and the rest of taxpayers at Danville are gonna be, uh, getting new students from that project, shouldn't they be responsible for some sort of...
Well, the, the pilot program has made, the whole reason, I wasn't there when they did this, so I'm just going on what I've been told since, the whole pilot program is an idea of getting the building done and saving the builders some taxes. They still pay a full amount of taxes, um, on a scale, okay, after five years, I've gotta be paying your taxes, just so the town will be getting those taxes.
In a way, they go to the school district.
Because that's the way the pilot program...
Isn't that observed in council?
Yes.
So, so, and Dave, we've had this, I've had, I've had this conversation...
It's funny to hear, it doesn't make any sense to me that now they're gonna do that again for another...
Well, it's one of the suggestions that came up.
By whom?
One of the council members suggested that maybe we ought to look into it as a pilot program, but...
Dave, the, the idea behind it is that the current, like, for instance, Essling Lake, the town was getting zero, if I'm correct on it, right? So the idea was, we're gonna get revenue, and what I've been told, and this is not, I mean, I guess it's as official as it is on YouTube, but that if there were students coming out of there, the town would sit down with us and come up with compensation to the district to pay for those students. the district to pay for those students. So that's where I, now unfortunately, that's a, hey, let's have a conversation sidebar, not official, that's what concerns me, but that would make it fair. And at the end of the day, it, the idea being, and I'm not necessarily agreeing or disagreeing with this, is that the town, the school district is benefiting because in the long term, you're going to get revenue out of that building that you would have gotten zero out of because the building wasn't, nobody was paying taxes on the empty building.
There's a trail, there's increased traffic, there's increased congestion, there's decreased evidence that's coming to that.
Correct, but from a school district only perspective, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't asking to understand the traffic or any of that, I appreciate that information, but I look at it and say, 59 or 60, whatever, units, how many students come out of there? And what does that mean to the district? Because that sounds like a pretty big development to me if you add, you know, so I think the issue is, is not just always the individual units, but it's cumulatively. So Essling Lake, plus there, plus the one over at the post office, plus the buildings that they're building on the other side of town, about five new houses over by you and I. I mean, you start adding these up, and you're like, okay, three kids here, six kids here, 10 kids here. Now you're talking about, okay, now we need another section. So those are the kind of things I think that we need to work better with, because we're surprised on them.
And I think one of the things we need to know is that the town is working very hard to start to meet these different obligations that we are going to be told that we have to meet in a way that it's not going to be another, never going to be another peer place, in other words. Never just built just for low-income housing period, because that, that's all they could do back then. That is really a fiasco, having everybody, there's, it's just, it doesn't work well. And so that's why they're trying to spread it out. They're trying to find the best way to build our responsibilities with as minimal an impact as possible, and by making it a transit village kind of thing. They're assuming, which is, you know, we all know what happens when we assume, but they're assuming that it's going to be more young couples without family, because there only going to be one and two bedroom units, and that they're going to be buying there because it'll be an easy commute to the city.
Let me clarify two things about a pilot. First of all, the school districts continues to receive tax revenue on the existing properties. What you don't receive the revenue is for the period, whatever period of time it can be, it can be five years, 10 years, whatever it is, you don't receive any additional revenue on the improvement. So if the property's worth 500 grand, now it's worth 3 million, you don't get the increase. And there's another thing, though. The school district, no matter if they pay their taxes or not, still gets their money. So that's important for us to realize.
The school district gets their money on the 500.
Yeah, if the guy's not paying his taxes, we still get our money.
Exactly. That was the point on Essling.
But the point would be, so if the property's worth $50,000 with zero kids on it, and now it's worth $300,000 with 20 kids coming out of it, and the town has now made a deal that is, you know, like you come up, it's very self-serving, the district for five years plus now is without that revenue, which becomes cumulative every single year as well.
But also, you've got to remember, is that that five-year plan started with the putting in of the shovel. So we had two years of it being built, which you had no kids coming out of. We're into the third year, and it is a graduated increase that they're paying in taxes, that you will be getting money for. Each year, they're paying, they're going from like 40% to 60% to 80%, and then they'll be at 100% at the end of five years.
The part that, you know, I'm one of seven, of course, that is, number one concerning and number two is frustrating, is that there doesn't seem to be a consideration based off of, we just like to tell from a full board perspective, a communication with the board to discuss what may be the long-term impact of the situation. You can call them one to, you know, trainee types of, or commuter types of apartment alley, or whatever it may be, but any person in any of these towns, it seems to us small families that have to work there, and not having consideration for what had been a really, really difficult space issue that we had, we worked through, that, you know, naturally is, has become a little more palpable. And that's number one, from a space perspective. Number two, not looking at the revenue factor of the school district that we have to serve the district there, is frustrating. Again, I'm one of seven, and I'm just making this point, that the council's view was to, you know, have whatever plan that they wanted to have, let it benefit the town without thinking of the entire town. And now the school board, five years from now, 10 years from now, is going to have to figure out how to do it. It's just wrong.
And I think that's where my initiative comes to say, let's open up the dialogue and let's understand. I mean, I haven't seen a documentation, I've had conversations generally about like for instance, Essling Lake and what that looks like, but does anybody up here understand what the scale is and what that means to the district? Probably not exactly.
Yeah, but Mike, you're reading it in the paper, right?
I'm reading it in the paper, I'm seeing the presentations about, you know, the Redmond Press, and that's my point, is we need to have a dialogue, because we just spent five grand on a demographic study that might be as good as this piece of paper right now, because, you know, it may be affected. I don't know if it is or isn't, but we've gone, and by the way, when we do those demographic studies, the demographer calls the town, and I guess it depends on where it is in the approval process, they mention it or don't mention it. So we need to open up the dialogue and just understand, hey, what are you guys thinking? What's the plan? Where are you going? I know some of the stuff is legal stuff that can't be discussed.
A lot of it's beyond our control at this point.
But this stuff was presented, and we still don't know, we haven't, I mean, the way I found out about it was somebody sent me an email and said, hey, what's up with this 60 unit? What's this going to mean to the schools? That's not how we as a board, I think, if we open up the dialogue, we can find out better and say, hey, this was presented last night, let's talk about it, let's look at what it means. I just think there's a better dialogue that we can have, that's all, I think.
Okay.
I do have to remind you guys, though, and I apologize if, Mike, it may have been prior to your coming on the board, I know I had discussions with the board about some possible pilots that may be coming down the line. And also, the town has reached out to me to find out how many kids are in these, in these schools, you know, in the schools from our, from Essling Lake. So we're in talks already about some cooperation. It's, it probably, if, maybe, maybe the communication directly, town council to board, maybe could improve, but I got to say that there has been some discussion with me and the mayor, and I have, you know, tried to give you guys that info. I may not have updated you on it, but I'm sure, you know, I know Marietta has been involved in it, and I think, Dave, you...
Yeah, it should be that's the issue, it really is, and I do think that we've talked about it, even when we talked about the demographic. Again, my point isn't exclusive to the fact that it doesn't seem like the town has communicated with the board, but it's not exactly, like, the entire point then. The point really is that, you know, we're a bigger brother, we have a greater infrastructure, we employ more people, and to a certain degree, the impact of the town, we were specifically when we talked about education. Yet somehow, we're being pushed around, not pushed around, but we're being shorted by the town.
Underrepresented.
Yeah, underrepresented, thank you. And it's a very frustrating, I'm one of seven, it's very frustrating, you know, because I'm thinking about five years from now, what that revenue might mean to the district, when we have to now educate these kids, and then 10 years from now, and so on and so on, when we, that bubble starts going through the district, and now the revenue that would have been associated with those kids is not going to lift up. And the town then is going to look at the school district at that point, whoever is sitting here or not sitting here, and is going to wonder what you're going to do. Do we know how many people reside at Essling Lake, hop on the train?
I have no idea.
It was 100 units.
More importantly, I, more importantly, how many, do we know if any students are coming out of there?
There's eight kids in K8. I don't know about how many are in the high school. It was, it was projected to be 18 or 19 K12. Right now, we have eight in K8.
So average cost per student is what?
Sixteen.
Sixteen out of 16? So 16 times eight is our cost this year. It's just a dialogue I think we need to have, because it's...
I think you're, Nancy?
You should say it that way.
Well, Nancy, yeah, I mean, I think, I think you're hearing what we're saying, you know.
Yeah, I am, and I'll pass on your concerns to the council and see if there's anything else they'll do except send me here and try to figure out what's going on. Well, I'll tell you that, right now, if they were putting a vote on Redmond Press before the council, it will go down because of the transportation issues of getting people in and out of that village, and the backup on Route 53, and the backup on Station Road. It's, it's not going to pass unless they come up, the planning board comes up with other ideas and alternatives.
I'm not, I think they...
No, I'm not talking about solving that, but I'm just saying, right now, it's not something that's going forward in any, any speed at all, so.
Well, I would rather the consideration not be exclusive to traffic and also be considered to the education of 1600 of the...
So is it really an issue of, though, have a voice at a planning board meeting? You just said it's the planning board that's deciding.
Well, the plan, what, the way it was explained to us is that the first step was to say, okay, we'll look at this. And that was, that happened two weeks ago. And then it will go on to the planning board, we'll look at it. Then it comes back to us, and then it goes to the state, and then it goes back to the planning board, and then it comes back to us. I think there's like eight to 10 steps that have to go on before it ever even hits the table as something that we might be considering.
Yeah, but it's easier to have a voice at the table early on than late after it's been approved eight to 10 times.
So, I mean, you're as early as, as any of us are.
Yeah, but so what I'm, I guess what I was trying to get at is, it's not just you going back as the liaison from us to the town council. We might actually have to go...
I'll certainly take your concerns toward, to the next meeting, because I always make a report on what...
No, well, and I speak for myself, appreciate you doing that.
And it might come to some meetings as well, and so...
But it might actually be a planning board meeting that one of us should maybe go speak at, is what I'm trying to...
Well, the, and the planning board doesn't have the authority to approve a pilot.
I know, but we could ask them to consider, in their decision-making, the impact on the schools, not just on traffic, I think is what I'm hearing.
Right, I mean, to Dave's point, to Dave's point, you know, that, that direct impact, we, you know, we want to, we want to make the message that, you know, there is a direct impact. And it's more direct than the number of cars on the road, or the number of people that, you know, roads have to be snowplowed, it's, it's really direct for us. So I think that's...
And the reason I brought it up was, I wanted to get a feel for the board, when I talk to the council as the board liaison, that this is a feeling that we have as a board. If I was one of seven, I certainly don't want to go there and say that, you know, we want to open this dialogue and everything, and if everybody said no, I think that is not worthwhile at this point.
Well, included in that dialogue, we're going to have to make sure that we understand that a lot of it's going to come down to what, even if we don't want to build in some of these areas, we're not going to have any choice. And that the way the formula runs, for every one low-income, moderate-income house or residence, we have to build six regularly. So what the state came out with first was, they wanted 6,000 units built in Denville, because they wanted us to up our low-income housing to 1,000. We only have 6,500 residents in Denville, residences, you know, houses and stuff like that.
Currently.
Currently. So they're wanting, they came out with a formula that was doubling our residences, and we are fighting tooth and nail to try to keep it down way below what that, we're saying, the most we want to put in is some, about 85 more units, because we've tried to stay ahead of the curve all the way. We've always had more low-income housing than we were required to have. There's a bubble area, you were talking about bubbles, there's a bubble area where they're saying, you haven't, we haven't told you anything in these last seven years. So we're going to combine all those seven years and put them on, and this is going to be what you have to have built by 2025. And so we're fighting in the courts, some of the decisions have been good, some of the decisions haven't come out real well. We have what are called intervenors who want to build, and right now, we're saying, no, you can't build, and they're going to the courts saying, we have to have a better plan. An example, all of you remember the Purple House on...
Yes.
Well, there's a section in there, and this, there's a gentleman who wants to sell that and build something like 200 units on that piece of property. And we're saying, number one, it doesn't feed, it doesn't meet what Denville says they want in buildings, that we don't want a big box apartments house built up there, and number two, the land won't support it, but he's gone to court and he's got...
Because that land runs behind that chopping mower, right?
Yes, it's a huge piece, yeah.
Eighty acres of wetlands.
No, I don't think that's wetlands.
It was, it was single-family, but they...
The one further down is wetland.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we, and we understand the impact on the schools, you know, more than anything, I'll tell you, I understand the impact on the schools.
And I don't need to...
No, no, and I'm just saying that every time it's brought up, I do try to...
Oh, yeah, because you understand it better than probably some of us do.
No, but the part that's weird, I don't understand is that, I understand the fact the town might be fighting building, right? But when they are approving these buildings, or these buildings, why in the world are they saying that, okay, well, we're going to let you build these things, and oh, by the way, we're going to hold on to the revenue.
No, they can't do that on anything but property that we are rehabilitating.
But that's every piece of property.
No, it is not.
It has to be condemned.
It has to be.
But the Redmond Press is one.
Property that's been told, for instance, they could, they could take an entire section by Redmond Press, the four houses, the four schools, the Denville string ban, there's, all of those are non-conforming houses, non-conforming properties. Denville could condemn and take them over, but they're not going to, even though that would give them more housing. But, no, we're not doing it, we're not using eminent domain to do those things. So we're working with those properties and everything else, it drives them, because one of them has five apartments in, I think, already. And so, anyway, that's beside, but like say, where the Purple House was, that is not eligible for pilot.
That's right, but we're talking about two pieces of property that seem to be on the board, one is the Essling Lake building, and then it's the one at Redmond Press, both of which would be part of those pilot programs, both of which would be adding students to the district.
You can't, you can't count Redmond as being pilot yet, because there are so many conditions that need to be met, and that doesn't mean...
That's all, one, Essling Lake, for most places, you might still add a G P student to the district, it's still...
Eight, eight students.
Eight or eighteen students?
Eight, projected, 19 K12.
My frustration is with the idea that there's, one of seven people seems to be very low consideration.